I'd like to call to order the Hingham School Committee meeting of December 18th, 2017, at 7:34 PM. And as we begin this evening, I have some sad news to share with the community. That longtime cherished worker in Town Hall, Bill Lawton, passed away. He was on the maintenance team and he always set up this building and he had been on medical leave and unfortunately, he recently passed away. So, our condolences to his family and he'll be in our thoughts and prayers and we have no service information as of yet. So, just wanted everyone to know. So, next on our agenda is approval of minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Joint School Committee and Advisory Committee Education Subcommittee meeting that was held on December 12th, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will have our December 4th meeting minutes at the next meeting, the first meeting in January to approve. Questions and comments? Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. Does anyone in the audience have anything to share that's not on our agenda? Thank you. Number four, superintendent's report.
Thank you. The first thing I want to mention is an update on the kindergarten enrollment discussion. We have the date and location now for the next forum that we're going to be sponsoring and it's up on your screen. It will go out tomorrow to the preschools. We have good cooperation, wonderful cooperation from our preschools in terms of reaching parents that aren't yet a part of our system. And they are willing to share things and have done that before and we're asking them to share this again as well. And so, this is the notice that is going out. I waited to send it till tomorrow so you could have a chance to at least look at it. But we will also publicize it on the website, on the kindergarten page, and also on Facebook page, and also at the elementary schools through the X2, and we'll send a copy to the press as well because this is an important audience to reach and we can't always reach them by our typical means. So, it's a forum, but different from the others in that the others were forums where we wanted to hear what people thought about our protocols in terms of kindergarten enrollment and the appropriate age. This forum is more a forum that we have to share information that we promised that we would give them and that's more information about the readiness skills that we talk about for kindergarten, the act of kindergarten curriculum, and also how the decisions that we've made that were described at the last meeting in terms of changing our process and the language that Cynthia will speak to later in this meeting that's in the policy handbook, and to talk in general about the kindergarten enrollment process, which typically we haven't really done at all before. So, those are the main things on the agenda and while we'll respond to questions or comments, the idea here is pushing out information as opposed to listening to their perspectives about whether or not we would make a change in the policy. So, that's what we plan to send tomorrow and the meeting is the night that we have.
Should the date for the age be August 31st?
Yes.
Yes. Right here Doug. It says August 1st as opposed to August 31st.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Thank you for that. I'll fix that right now, maybe. I guess I will fix that future.
The preschools are able to electronically get this out, right? Because I know a lot of them have finished school already. They're done.
Well, I'll see what we have for. We can send some of the major ones out because we have emails for the heads, but we can't send them all by email because we don't have that information to them. And then, I do have the other document that we showed last week and so that is, nobody made any comments on it, so I'm assuming that's going to be okay for everybody. So, let me get back to. Also in your packet is a letter inviting me to attend the VFW award ceremony. It was back on December 9th and it was run by Hermesma who was the scholarship chairman for Veterans of Foreign Wars. And this is an annual event and at this particular event, I think it was seven of our middle school students who were on it for their wonderful essay writing and the awards come with a savings fund kind of gift. Also, Dylan, who went to Normandy with Chrissy O'Connor, was also recognized at that same ceremony and so it's always a great event. Also in attendance were Laney Silver, who's chairman of the English Department, and Heather Sullivan, who's a middle school teacher, really initiated this program at middle school and continues to sponsor it. They had something like 75 actual essays from which to choose this year and then as well Chrissy O'Connor came with respect to the Dylan Award. The next thing I want to mention is a kind of a courtesy notification of something that we want to do at this time and because you were involved in taking a vote on the high school handbook last fall, we feel that we need to notify you and that is in the discipline code, which is a policy-like document but not voted by the school committee. We use that discipline code as our procedures for the policy. Under Section E, which are some of the more egregious issues that we have, there was a difference in the penalty for first offense between the middle school and the high school. Looking back, I suspect that the reason there was a difference where one penalty was for a Saturday school penalty, four hours, and the other was for an in-house suspension, was that middle school didn't have in-house suspensions. I'm sorry, middle schools didn't have Saturday school at their option. Regardless, because the topic, which has to do with vaping, is an important one and a particular one that we're concerned about at this point, the high school, school council who discussed this issue at length and the high school principal would like for the two penalties to be same and that would be, that it would be a one-day in-house suspension for first offense. And this vaping is talking about a tobacco, not an alcohol or worse offense, so I want to be clear about that. So, the discipline code is a district-wide document. At the middle school and the elementary schools, the document is now given out online. But at the high school, just for the convenience of all many kinds of documents high school kids have, we have one document that includes the high school handbook, which is something the school committee is supposed to, by ed reform, supposed to approve annually. Also in that document is the athletic handbook and also in that document is the discipline code. And because you all approved the entire booklet because it includes the handbook, we felt that it wouldn't be appropriate to make a change in that without you all being made aware that we're going to do that mid-year and also with Derek, Rick Swatson's guarantee that he would be sure that parents and students are appropriately notified of that change. So, that's why it's in your handbook. So, unless there are any questions about it.
Well, my concerns, I'm all for changes on the handbook, special address and, you know, some new, you know, items that has been brought forward. But I am concerned that the policy didn't have an opportunity to look at the language that, you know, would be proposed by the principals.
The policy subcommittee did.
We did.
Oh, so you did?
Yeah.
Oh, you have.
And this isn't policy, it's procedure. So, we looked at it.
Yes, I should have mentioned that.
And recommended the dot.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. So, we don't have to vote on that.
And I can also say that I was at the meeting as the liaison. I did not participate in the discussion, but it was, I was very pleased with the discussion that they had and that was, there were four students there, staff, parents, community members. They are taking, you know, they were going to review the discipline code as a whole in the high school and then also they were talking about they want to start with the vaping issue because it's a challenge right now. And this is one component of what they're, how they're going to start addressing the vaping. They're going to have an assembly. They want to look at also during, you know, like when kids are in their suspension or Saturday school, having them be educated about certain things and not just sit there. And it was a very robust conversation and students were really good about bringing up like, "Well, I don't know if that's really going to work because this is what kids are thinking about." And then, parents were raising issues of what was of concern of theirs and so it was a very good balanced conversation. And this was one takeaway that they did ask me, "Can you bring it back?" And I said, "Let me bring it back to the policy, let me bring it back to the superintendent and make sure we get everybody's input." So, it was a good process. And he also had, Rick had also looked at other towns and what the discipline was for other towns and that was also consistent with what was being done in the middle school too.
You have the December 1 enrollment in there. There's only a slight difference of a few students from November, as you would expect at this time of year. At the last meeting, we talked a bit about the school committee want to.
I have a question on that enrollment. I looked at the October enrollment.
Yep.
And we lost five kids in the middle school since the October. Is that, do we usually lose that many kids mid-year? It seemed like an awful lot of kids to lose.
I can look up who they are, but my guess is that they're mostly kids who've moved somewhere as opposed to for some other reason. I know in one of the buildings, we had twins and, you know, that would impact it. But we do get that information, so we can find that out.
Okay.
And also whether they all, you said between October and now.
I just looked at the October one because I was, I remembered that meeting as opposed to looking at the other one.
Okay. I will look up that fact. All right. At the last meeting, we talked a bit about engaging with Stacker Sterling Company, the Sterling Company, with respect to doing a discovery process with us. And that discovery process would include some forums and other kinds of discussions, talking about the different kinds of technologies and different kinds of ways of communication that parents and students and staff would like to see, to be able to make some more informed decisions about where we should be going with our communications outreach, particularly within the technology domain. And so, we think that cost is going to be probably in the six to eight or $10,000 range and I suggested that we would come back, since we want to get it started this spring, to you with a thought about exactly where those dollars could come from because we can't just manufacture them. We do have a fairly recent and unanticipated retirement and because we're having to replace that person with a sub of a sub and then a substitute for the rest of the year, there will be significant savings in that account that we didn't anticipate having when we wrote the budget and so we think that amount of money can fund that project if that's what you choose to go forward with. So, I don't believe you took a vote on that last time, waiting to hear what the amount would be, but certainly knowing that, that we can fund it and make a coherent decision.
So, what would the next steps then be for us to get this moving? I know that they, that Stacker wanted to have from us a budget so that they can determine how many hours that they would.
Yes.
Set up for us and, you know, how we want to do the survey and things like that.
You might want to do one not to exceed vote.
We can do that at the January 8th meeting.
Okay.
So, you can talk with them and get the more details of the scope unless you confirm with them and then we can put that on the agenda for January 8th.
Okay.
Or the, you know, whatever works with your timing, the 8th or the 22nd.
I'll see with, because of the holidays, quickly have a response, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's good news. Communications?
Yes, I brought this letter because it's a letter that we had actually been awaiting for some time. We are scheduled for a coordinated program review, which is a review that DESE does and typically on a six-year cycle. So, our site visit for that review would be in the 18, 19 school year, but during the 17, 18 school year, we would be doing a self-assessment and submitting lots and lots of documentation in the categories that they suggest. The coordinated program review for this year was to be focused on special education. So, it's always special education and then something else. And this time, the something else is civil rights. In past years, this something else might have been the Title I program, but always special ed and some other set of criterion. So, they have unbeknownst to us, and so we got this letter, actually, they have changed that process. It's no longer going to be called the coordinated program review process. Instead, it's called the tiered focus monitoring review. Now, you could make the assumption that it just changed the name and that the process will be the same. However, there is some day-long training coming up. It was originally going to be in January. Now, it's the end of February, the middle part, I guess, February 9th for us. And so, Liz and Kathy Byrd will be going because a lot of the information has to be entered electronically into a template. They will be going to the training and Jamie and Karen Herman will be going for the civil rights part of it. So, until we go to the training, we don't know the scope of the review and therefore we don't know the scope of the preparation or the self-study or self-assessment. They've called it various things over the years, but, and we don't know the date of when the actual review will be in 18, 19. Often, that's in the spring, so we can make an assumption about that. But it's an enormous amount of work. On the other hand, the results for us have always been good results that we've been in compliance with, in some cases, all of the criterion that they referenced and in some cases, there were some modifications or changes that we had to make. So, we've been talking about it for a long time, but henceforth, we need to talk about it as the tiered focus monitoring review as opposed to the CPR. So, wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, good. Student, communications.
Well, okay, why don't you go? And I'll come back to the other two because they're under your name anyway.
So, not a lot is happening at the end of high school as the students and teachers get ready for the holiday break. However, there's a large level of excitement as the seniors start to find out, like the colleges are accepted to. Moreover, winter sports are just starting up. The track team had their first two meets this past weekend weekend and the sophomore, Lila Belcher, qualified for nationals already in high jump. As the seasons continue, go and support all the teams. The Hingham High School mentor group continued to help one another and make sure everyone feels comfortable. Tonight, there was a movie night, hoping to gain a bigger connection from student to student with people that aren't necessarily friends outside of school. In February, the Hingham High School will be welcoming 20 exchange students from China and this will help further our knowledge on the differences between our everyday lives and theirs and create friendships that can last a lifetime. And lastly, this Friday, the students and faculty will be participating in a holiday sweater, school spirit day.
Thank you. Enjoy the vacation break.
All right, you also have in your packet the transition reports and some visual documentation as well for both the high school and the middle school for the end of November, so that's in there FYI. Those continue to be well-used spaces and fairly large number of students who are benefiting from an illness or an injury. And that, of course, includes concussions and based upon some of this data, particularly from the high school, our intern Ted Hirsch compiled the report because I thought it was important that, we have a source of data here that we never intended to have about concussions and without making any judgment, I thought that it was important to share that somehow with all of you and with parents. So, we have a report, but I'm curious as to what you think might be the best way to share it and with whom.
Is it just numbers? Are there conclusions made or what was Ted's?
Well, we felt uncomfortable drawing conclusions. So, it's a report about the data and how it began to accumulate in the concussion area and there's also some information in it about other studies and research that has been done based upon, you know, well-known sources. So, there is some additional information, but there's not a conclusion drawn such as therefore, you might want to think twice about whether your children are playing sports or not. So, there's no judgment made, just information to be shared. I would point out that not all of the concussions happen in athletics. There are a lot of kids who have other kinds of injuries and separate conclusions. So, that information is there. It's also broken down into how many students are special, students with special needs. Our monthly reports are broken down that way and how many kids are typical little kids and so it's really just feeling that we don't want to hide something that we may know that people could have interest in having. It's about five or six pages long.
I guess I'd like to see, once I see it, then I can make a judgment.
All right, so I will share.
But I think it's worth, you know, depending on what's in it.
He did talk to.
Sharing with people and making them aware of what's happened.
He talked to Margaret Conaty about her perspective in terms of sports. He talked with Pat Simon, the recently retired high school nurse, and he talked with Melanie who runs the transition room about some of their thoughts about this data. All right, so I will share it with you.
Did he look at the middle school too or is that not enough data?
No, we didn't have, you know, the middle school just started in the spring.
Right.
So, mainly is about the high school. When he talks about transition rooms, it's kind of general information, but the particular data is high school specific.
It seems like the middle school, it's a much higher number.
Right, and we know that that is not from interscholastic athletics. So, it's surprising, it was surprising to me for that fact that I thought it would be a lot less, but we do have a lot of youth participation in sports and we have a lot of other things, just common accidents resulting in concussions as well. So, all right, I will get that to you.
Is there a maximum number that the transition room will hold and?
Well, it's a fairly small room. It's not a regular-sized classroom, but when you look at those numbers, some students, so it's throughout the day now, fortunately, we have the day covered. Originally, we only had four hours of the day covered. And some students just come out of a particular class, some students come every other day, some students come every day. So, to date, it hasn't been reported to me that they are out of space. But it's a room that used to be half of the guidance office conference room, so half of it is now allocated for that purpose and the other half is allocated for the post-secondary planning center, which still is alive and active even though the gal who runs that is also a guidance counselor and has a caseload this year. We moved her last year from a tutor status to a guidance counselor. So, space could be a problem at the high school, more so than at the middle. The middle is a bigger kind of space and it's segregated more from the general population.
And is there a definition for the use of the, like a defined definition of the use?
Yeah, there's a trifold brochure. I think there's one on my desk, but I got one to you that, yes, that does define it and it's a medical or emotional, but often resulting from a hospitalization. It's not a program into which a child or a parent might make a choice. It's available to kids that have injuries, illnesses, recent hospitalizations, things very defined like that.
Okay. And then, the facilities report, do you have any comments?
Yeah, the facilities report is there and it's kind of interesting that it just came along last week because there is a summary in it about foster school and the updating of the things that we not only started during the summer but actually accomplished. And it is different from the normal ones, which normally are what was completed in the prior month and what is planned for the coming month. So, this one in addition has a focus on the foster update and we'll be sharing this on Wednesday night when the school building committee meets because we've invited parents to come to that meeting and I'm sure that will be a question, so it's great we have that. And also, during the last report, Doug had promised that he'd give us some information about savings in a sense or lowered consumption in particular. This one's about electricity. So, the Plymouth River is up there in a separate graph because Plymouth River has electric heat, so that consumption would be expected to be greater. And then, the electrical consumption in November in the other schools as well, comparing 16 with 17. So, I think he's going to continue to do this with some of the other utilities that we have, but this is the first one of those. We've asked Doug or Katie to come to the Wednesday night building committee information to share the foster information with them.
Okay, I guess we'll talk more about foster when we get to that. I guess on the facilities, I was just curious, so the heat issue that happened was different from what was repaired?
Yes, and that's good. So, we had a heat issue last, one of the first two coldest days of the year, was it?
Last week, right? Last week, I think.
Yeah, it was, but was it Tuesday or Wednesday? Well, in any event, we had a heat issue there and it was determined that it was a failed solenoid and had nothing to do with any of the things that we've done there. So, that was good and it was a relief and we got it resolved and we've had nothing since then. But because of that, we have made some changes in practice. One is to have someone earlier in the winter at Foster to be sure that if something were to go awry, we would know about it sooner and therefore could resolve it more quickly. We also determined in all of the buildings, there's a heat turndown and always has been at night and the hours vary a little bit from one building to the next, but the determination here was during these really cold streaks, that's not a good idea to do a heat turndown. So, we will not, will not continue to do that. So, Katie wrote a very good explanation and had it out that day to Debbie and who shared it with parents and so we think things are under control and obviously, there's a high priority there. When Foster calls, then Foster gets immediate treatment and that becomes the first priority of the day, so.
So, is a solenoid, is that unique to the foster heating system or is that standard to all heating systems?
No, I think it's standard to all systems. It works with the pneumatics so that, you know, it's. It works with the pneumatics so that, you know, it's, and cars have them too, with trigger valves on and off. So it failed and the valves apparently didn't open and no steam could get into the pipes, and that was because of the cold. So it could have, could happen in any school at any time.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, because I don't want those foster parents to think it's only them that a problem like that could happen to.
No, I mean, they'll be, you know, they'll always, it's wintertime and these are the types of things that we do have to respond to, you know, so.
But since we're talking-
I love to say nothing's going to happen, but that's not practical, it's not reality. Things will happen over the course of the winter, not only at Foster but at other schools as well.
Well, as did happen at the high school.
Yep.
Recently, a boiler problem at the high school.
We have a boiler at the high school twice. We had it repaired actually last January at seventeen, and twice since then it's ruptured again. It has had been re-repaired under warranty, but that's not a good sign. But it's repaired now.
But it's still under warranty, yeah.
No, well, I mean, well, they fixed it. It was January, it failed in November, and then it just failed again last week again. Fortunately, we, you know, we've had one boiler firing, which is good, you know, and that can handle the load. When it gets really, really cold, you want to have, make sure you have both, but it's been repaired.
Okay. All right, six, unfinished business, six point one, to continue discussion of fees for fiscal year nineteen. Kids in Action and the Hingham Public Schools Integrated Pre-K, we talked about it at our last meeting, full-day kindergarten, we touched on, and then I added athletics for this time. So, and will act as appropriate. So I wanted to separate them because, you know, I just want to talk about, we can talk a little bit more about full-day kindergarten, and then we can also, but start talking about athletics. But let's start with Kids in Action and the Pre-K, since we have some, John provided us with some proposals on those. And I know that parents are going to need to hear about those things too. So Kids in Action, we have a four percent proposal, and the Pre-K, we have a two and a half percent proposal. Is there a reason why one is four percent and one is two and a half percent?
Yeah, well, Kids in Action, as you know, is a sort of, is a separate run of fund, as is the other one too. But Kids in Action is not required by the school system. You know, the Integrated Pre-K program, we need to have that Integrated Pre-K, we need to have model children to participate in the class as well. So as a result, you know, that one there, the recommendation is two and a half percent. Kids in Action, on the other hand, is a competitive market service really provided by the district. And as you know, over the past few years, Kids in Action has started participating or contributing more heavily towards the operating budget. You know, last year to the tune of about a hundred and twenty thousand, this year to the tune of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars as a profitability. So the four percent, and the four percent rates, the rates for Kids in Action are still below market for, you know, comparable services within the Hingham area. And the, Kids in Action, in addition to, you know, paying regular increases in inflation for, you know, teachers and for supplies and services, they also pay their own insurance as well. So it's really, it's a higher cost service than the Pre-K program. So that's the, and this four percent still keeps us well below market in a very competitive environment.
It seems that for Pre-K, whether they are telling two days or five days, the fees are exactly the same?
For the Kids in Action or Pre-K?
Kids in Action.
For Kids, yeah, well, there's certain things, like the four-school fees. You can come one day, if you sign up for a four-school, whether you do two days or five days, it's the same rate.
The same rate, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same rate.
Because it's only an hour of time, so.
You know, and, you know, we hope that parents will use it, but we don't see, you know, pricing it for a day here, a day there, it just would get too complicated because it's not worth the administrative effort.
Would it be fair to say that over the last five years, the school budget has been growing by a minimum of four percent per year?
I think the, I think the data would show that case.
So based on that data alone, I have a problem supporting a two and a half percent increase. What has the increase been for Integrated Pre-K over the last five years have been?
I think the last one was-
Has it always been about two percent?
Two percent, two and a half, three percent, I think was what we proposed last year. The difference with the, the difference with the Pre-K is we can't price that so high that we don't get model students. We need the model students.
Have we ever had a problem, though, getting those kids?
Sure, yes, yes.
We have.
We have. So we want to be, you know, careful and, you know.
But is it the cost that's a factor for the parents? I mean, have we looked into this? What is the reason? Is it the money, or maybe it's something different?
I think it's a factor. One of the big factors is that it's not five days a week, and it's not a full day. And many parents who are looking for a preschool program are looking for both of those things, mainly for the childcare concept. So we have had a problem in getting enough kids. The reason that we haven't had as much of a problem recently is that since we've had the full-day kindergarten program, that took away our whole Kids in Action program. And since we have a full-day kindergarten, we can't offer what we could offer those kids before, who would come for the Integrated K as kind of a humanitarian, good experience for kids effort, also took advantage of our Kids in Action Pre-K program so they could have the longer day and not just the half-day. And so we don't have that to offer them anymore. So fortunately, we've been able to get enough kids. We need roughly thirty-five to forty kids. If you think of by the end of the year, we have forty kids in our preschool program, we need a comparable number of kids, typical kids, to be there. So still a fair number of kids, but it's not what it was when we had the Integrated Pre-K and the Integrated Kindergarten, both paying fees for the service, so.
But have, but this year, did we have, did we struggle to fill the class, or did we have a waitlist, or did we?
It was going-
I don't recall a waitlist ever for, you know, it's more like we need to, we need to fill the seats.
I'm just thinking maybe we need to address this issue differently because increasing the fees by only two percent or two and a half percent per year and having a budget growing at four to four and a half percent per year, I mean exponentially, those costs just get more and more unsustainable, especially for this one program.
Well, except that we still, we still would have to offer the program, so we're not creating a new classroom, we're not hiring more teachers. We still have the same, we would have to have the same number of classroom teachers. So it's unlike the Kids in Action where we're paying for everything. We're paying for supplies, we're paying for teachers, we being the community, the members who participate. So this is, this is very different.
It's a specialized program that would run whether or not typical peers are there. So the typical peers are actually a nice offset, but even if nobody came, because we price them out tuition-wise, it's still would have to run. Do you know what I mean? There's no economy of scale there.
But from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like tuition is the issue. It sounds more like it's the program itself that's not attracting parents.
Well, when do we have programs? Yes.
So if we increase the tuition by, let's say, three percent, I don't know if that's really going to have an effect. That's, this is what I'm hearing from you. I don't know if it's going to have an effect really on the enrollment.
You know, size, we should, look at the size of the revenue stream here to Pre-K. So this Pre-K program is about sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. So to add another half percent, it's not going to add too much. Kids in Action, on the other hand, is close to a million dollars a year. So that's, its Kids in Action program is a real vibrant program. The Pre-K program is, you know, we used to have extended kindergarten in there too, and it generated more revenue, so, you know, more like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. But once we got the full-day K, that program went away. So it's, you know, another half percent, I'm not sure what we're going to get out of doing that. And to, in my view, if it keeps the parents willing to subscribe and bring their children to benefit the overall, you know, the overall class structure, it's sort of six to one and a half dozen to the other whether we go up a half percent or not.
Well, they're not getting a typical kindergarten experience or Pre-K experience such as they would get in the, in the open market because there's children in classes whose goals are totally focused on the needs of the children that are there on IEP. So it's not the same kind, it's a wonderful experience because we've talented staff and we have pretty good class size ratios and so on, but they're not getting the same kind of an experience that they would get in a private, private mode.
That's also why that's priced dramatically less than the-
Excuse my question.
Right.
-regular Pre-Ks. So I'm, I'm looking, I'm thinking, I was thinking similar to you, but then also some consistency so we can explain what our increases are.
Well, to me, it sounds like the program's getting cheaper and cheaper every year, and it's not really helping with enrollment. And I understand his point that, you know, it's small compared to the overall size of the budget, but we have a lot of those programs that are like that, and they do add up.
But this one's a mandated one.
No, I understand.
Right. But I, you know, I'm looking at it of, if, two of, what's the Pre-K, and then what's the increase we're going to do for kindergarten? I see those two similar to, I mean, I guess I see all of them similar. The athletics, actually, that I separate a little bit because we haven't had an increase in a long time. But I'd also want to be able to explain, you know.
This program too, you know, there's a, sometimes with people in this, they'll get a waiver of this because it's a mandated program. Suppose the Kids in Action, there are no waivers because it's up to the parent's choice to go there. So it's, it's really, it is a subsidized program, so.
I still think it'd be subsidized even if we increased it by three percent, again, because over the, I don't know how many years, if you look at how the budget's been growing and how that program has been financed.
I mean, I did the math on the Pre-K of the two and a half percent, three percent, and the four percent, and then I rounded it. So, yeah, two and a half percent, we're going up to, I think John gave us the numbers, thirteen oh five, nineteen fifty, and twenty-five sixty. Then at three percent, you go up to thirteen, thirteen and a quarter, nineteen sixty-two, and twenty-five seventy-five. And then four percent, it goes to thirteen, twenty-six, nineteen eighty-one, and twenty-six hundred. So, and I was looking at thirteen, if we did four percent, you round up, you round down a little bit, thirteen, twenty-five, nineteen seventy-five, and twenty-six hundred. It's not that much more than the two and a half percent, so.
Is there something to be said about consistency? Especially when you're trying to communicate this to the community?
Now, one of the things we talked about too, that Carlos brought up at the last meeting, was do we lock in, you know, a three-year cycle or consistent with the collective bargaining agreement cycles? You know, then do we, you know, that cost of living was two percent. We know there's additional costs, so do we lock in the, you know, two and a half or even three percent each year versus coming back to this each year? Or do we go to four percent? Because that's, yeah, so some of the increase of the budget is we add things each year to the budget as opposed to it just being, because we have increasing enrollment and-
Isn't this program also a lottery, if I remember correctly?
If there, at one point, when we had, we did have, years and years ago, we did have a lottery of sorts because there weren't another programs meeting the need of preschoolers, parent want for childcare for preschoolers. And we did do a lottery at that point when we had, we haven't had to do a lottery.
But it's no longer a lottery?
I would be concerned because the net cost here is really only of the staff and not even a comparable number of staff. I mean, you could argue that if we didn't have these, these typical kids and we had forty preschoolers with needs rather than eighty.
They'd have to come for free. They'd have to come for free.
Yeah.
We have to run the program.
We would still have to have that number of classrooms. Now, maybe you could argue, well, instead of having ten or eleven preschool classrooms, we really only need to have nine. But in a sense, we could make the argument that if we go up more than the cost of the teachers or even, not considering the cost of the teachers, we got maybe two if we had fewer regular kids, and not only would we not be meeting the need, but you could argue that typical kids are supporting the special ed budget.
What happens if you don't get enough kids?
Excuse me?
What happens if we don't get enough kids?
Well, initially, we probably would have to look at getting a waiver. I don't know how hard those are to get, Liz, but.
For tuition, kids out?
Yeah, special ed kids out. I think it would be hard to make the case, if we were looking for a waiver, that it is cost of the typical kids that is the reason.
I think your points are well taken, Kay, right, about the percent being sort of comparable and reflective of the actual increase to the budget. I think that holds true relative to kindergarten and to Kids in Action. The full, the preschool, right, isn't a fee-for-service. It's a, it's a complement to the program. We have to run an integrated preschool. And so we have to be thoughtful, but I'm not saying that a four percent increase couldn't work, right? And that's not what I'm suggesting. But I'm saying in the grand scheme, those kids, we need them more than they need us, right, in the preschool. And we just want to be thoughtful, we don't price them out. Now, and I'm going to put a caveat around the preschool because it's unique. It's not a fee for, like, we need them. And in fact, if we ended up not getting anybody, we would either have to tuition out or drop, systematically drop the price till people came. Like, it has to run, or we would have to offer it for free because it's an integrated environment in the preschool, and that's a mandate of federal IDA law. So you're, it's, I think it's a fair point relative to those things that, like, we run a full-day K, therefore, the parents bear a burden, right, of the cost of the program. That's not really true in the preschool program. So I think it's fair relative to KIA, right? That's true. It's true relative to full-day K. With the Integrated Pre-K, the reason why we're sort of hesitating is because it's fundamentally differently, it's a differently structured program. Like, we actually need those kids more than they need us. They could go to a five-day, all-day-long program for roughly the same price they're paying for us to come for two half-days, if that makes sense? But I think, but in the grand scheme, your point's well taken, right? And I think we're recommending the four percent increase in the Kids in Action, but not necessarily with the preschool because it's fundamentally a little bit of a different structure. structure.
And I appreciate the explanation, because it does make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering if decreasing our fee every year, because basically, we're doing that when you have it, the cost's increasing at four and a half percent, and we're only increasing our fee by two percent, we're basically cheapening tuition every year. I'm just wondering, is that how we get more kids into this program, or do we need to be doing something else? I'm kind of, maybe we need to start thinking out of the box, because it's just not sustainable when we keep thinking that way.
But with the, I, I, fair enough, yeah.
So I don't know, maybe there isn't anything else that can be done, but I think we need to start thinking about these things.
About, thinking about?
Thinking out of the box. What is, what is the reason why we're not getting the enrollment we need? Or why do we not have a waiting list? I mean, it's a very relatively cheap program.
Yeah.
Sounds to me to be fairly inexpensive. Why are we not getting the number of kids that we need?
Well, we are at the moment. I think that our fear is pricing them out, is what the concern is.
Yes.
Right. Only the typical kids. Correct.
Right.
But it sounds like we're not getting enough typical kids.
No.
So are you saying it's less a, a finance issue and more a PR issue?
Or just, it sounded like to me that there weren't enough kids, or there used to be, now we're not getting the kids that we used to have, because the program isn't what the parents want. It's not full day, it's not five days a week.
But we can't make it what the parents want, because.
That's what I'm asking, is there something that we can do to help that?
It's a special ed program, not, it's not necessarily for typical kids.
Okay, so, do we, Liz, do we get enough people right now?
Right, no, yes.
Yeah, and.
Generally, we're struggling to keep the numbers high enough to have an integrated balance between the special ed students and the, you know, typical students. And this is something that our, and our towns also struggle with keeping the same balance.
And we have to hire those children, hire, we have to enroll those children, typical children at the beginning of the year, because the children with special needs come in throughout the year, and therefore, we have to have these kids in place. We can't be running around looking for new children to enroll in March, or in February, whenever, whenever it is. But I, but I guess I, I don't agree with, with the premise that the cost of the program, actually, these kids are part of the cost of the program, and yet, we're paying them and, we are enrolling them, and their parents are paying for their attendance. But the program, the cost of that program, if we eliminated the typical kids, in a sense, it would really cost us money, because this money goes back into, as an offset, you'll see it in the budget, the cost, the revenues raised here go back into the budgets as an offset for this special ed program. So they aren't part of the cost of the program, really. They're part of the support for the program.
It's not a fee-for-service, it's a different structure.
Yeah, are we, are, are we good now? Or can we, can we have a motion on?
Are we doing them separately?
I think we should enter it, yeah. So at least, I'd entertain a motion on Kids in Action, and I'd entertain a motion on that integrated pre-K.
All right, well, why don't we start with Kids in Action, since that's the one that doesn't seem to be as, causing as great a concern? So I'll make a motion that we increase the Kids in Action monthly fee by four percent for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen year. In each case, they'll round it to the nearest five dollars.
Right, in accordance with the schedule.
And in accordance with, yeah, the schedule that's presented in our packet.
Second? Okay, any further discussion on Kids in Action fees as presented? Now, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
So, do we need a vote on this today for the integrated kindergarten? Because I'd like to see the numbers. I'd like to see where we were five years ago, and now with enrollment numbers. Because I do remember there being a lottery, and this wasn't an issue, and now it is. It'd be kind of interesting to actually see the numbers.
Was the lottery for the kindergarten?
For the integrated.
For the preschool? Because there was a lottery for full-day kindergarten, when we didn't have.
Yeah.
That's what you remember.
Yeah. These are three-year-olds, right?
Right.
Three and four-year-olds. They're babies.
Okay. But it'd still be nice to see the numbers.
Is that going to change your opinion on?
No, no.
I don't recall a waiting list in the last five years or a lottery.
No, the explanation did help. Um, we understand why it's important to have these kids, but it would still be nice, if we're talking about numbers falling, to actually see them.
So more PR kind of data?
Just for my understanding.
Yeah.
You know, we're voting on something, it'd be nice to also have the data.
So you don't want to vote?
I guess I'm the only one, right?
Well, we need to, no, does it have to be done today? I mean, how, what is, what is the time sensitivity of this particular item?
Well, the more things we're certain of, the, you know, the better we can start.
Well, because we're looking at things like the offset for the budget, that's the reason this was moved up. Kids in Action, people are signing up for programs, other kinds of programs, starting in January, so we try to have those figures available
Yes.
to, to her.
But a half percent is not going to make any difference to the budget whatsoever. You know, not on this, not on this number, so it could, it could hold off, it's not, not to change.
So if we waited till the next meeting to vote on this, to have some more.
So what kind of information would?
I think, I think we can, we can vote tonight.
We can vote on it?
I just think, though, it'd be nice to see the numbers, because we're talking about enrollment not being there, and what is the enrollment, and what kind of numbers do we need to be aiming at? I mean, it would be nice to see some of that information.
Well, and I think for getting out into the community and, you know, talking it up, it will help to have the numbers to know that, whether it's full or. This is a program available to you, just sign up, it's there, versus.
Are you talking about enrollment numbers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Not financial?
No.
So with that said, I will make a motion to accept the proposed increase for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fee schedule for typical students in the integrated pre-K program, reflecting a two-point-five percent increase, rounded to the nearest five dollars over two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. All is further set out in the schedule that is included in our packet.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now, um, full-day kindergarten, I understand that the presentation from a few years ago was shared with everyone, those who were not on the committee at the time, got it a couple days ago, and then I had that forwarded to everyone today. And, um, so with kindergarten, we, there were a couple things, we were starting to talk about this, just for immediately, if we were going to increase any fees, and I guess that you need to know by our next meeting.
Is a few's in here?
Yeah, no. No, no, they weren't.
That's what I was looking for, they're not in.
And then, in the longer run, you know, for the five-year financial vision, we need to talk about when, if, and if this committee is seated this year, believes we should talk with the town about making full-day kindergarten publicly funded. So there's sort of two different issues on full-day kindergarten. So of those who were not on the committee when this decision was made, do you have any questions about the program for the administration?
I do.
Okay.
Actually, you sent us the slides, I think it was from two years ago.
Two sets of slides, one was an actual presentation that was done in the fall of that year, as we are still planning the program, and it really talked more about the rationale, and what would we hope to achieve, and what were the goals, and what was comparable information in other communities. So that was before the full development. And then during the budget process was when we developed the fee structure. We had a little subcommittee, Liza was on that subcommittee, we talked with the state, we had some grant funds and so on, so there are a few slides there at the end, that are relative to the initial fee structure, and then the impact on the budget. So those are the two things that I provided.
So for my, for me, I would like, it doesn't have to be at this meeting, and it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but I can even meet with you privately, Dr. Gallo, but I'd like to first just get a better understanding of the sliding scale and how it works.
Okay, that's, that's a state, the state scale, so.
Yes, so I'd like to just maybe sit down and just get a better understanding of how it works. And then, secondly, in the slides that you sent us, originally, it said total cost was eight hundred and fifty thousand, and it was to be offset by tuition of six hundred and fifty thousand, and a town contribution of two hundred thousand. And that was going to be requested. Can you just refresh my memory? Was that request fulfilled? And was that a one, I'm assuming a one paint, how, how was that contribution, how did that work? It's in your slides, that was how it was going to be funded.
I don't have the slides in front of me, so could you, I'm not sure I understand what the parts of it that you mentioned were. We had anticipated a number of things could happen.
Didn't happen.
I'm looking at this slide, and I'm just looking really at the total cost.
Yep.
Eight fifty, tuition revenue of six fifty, and then the town contribution. I was just curious more about the town contribution.
Well.
And how, was that financed? And is that something that's financed every year? So it was just more for my?
No, it was not. So these were hopes that we had. For example, at one point, we thought that the more students we, we increased to full-day status, the more chapter seventy in the foundation budget would fund them, because that's what it's supposed to do. But we get so little funding from the state, that that didn't materialize as real dollars either. So ultimately, all of that, this, was offset by parent tuitions. There were some additional startup costs, eighty-five thousand, I think, in the first year, and a comparable amount in the second year. That was state money only for planning purposes, it didn't fund any of the, the staffing. It did buy some equipment for us, to staff the new kindergarten classrooms, materials, toys and materials, some professional development. We used Laura Donovan to provide some training for our teachers. So it provided some good resources to start up the program, but that grant has now gone away.
We used some of the textbooks too? We used a little bit for the textbooks?
Yeah, with textbooks, yeah.
That the reading adoption, that we did two years ago, two years ago?
Anybody else have questions on the back? So where are we right now with the tuition? Because we did, didn't we increase it over the original starting?
We increased.
Thirty-five seventy-five?
Yeah, we.
I issued, do you know what the kindergarten tuition is?
Well, we had the amount of money for the little, what we call the late fee and some other things, from time to time, but that was an additional, additional.
But yeah, was it thirty-five seventy-five with a hundred and twenty-five dollar, um, administrative? Late fee, or it wasn't a late fee, or was it early, actually, thirty-five seventy-five for early, thirty-five seventy-five for early registration? If not, it was thirty-seven.
And we increased it last year, by, was it two percent?
Yeah. Yes.
And that tuition, part of calculating that tuition was looking at a range of considering people who wouldn't, who would be on the sliding scale part of it, who would have income challenges, and can we have, you know, estimating certain numbers of people that paying the full amount? And in order to look at, you know, what are our total costs? How can we cover those total costs with a range of people, depending on how many people can pay the full cost? And then we did a survey in advance to figure out if people would be paying the full cost, which was, it helped a lot, of people did respond. And I think it's around eighty percent.
Around eighty percent can pay for the full cost, but then also, children who enter kindergarten with an IEP, whether they move here with one or have an IEP in preschool, those children have waived fees. And that, this year, I think is something like twenty-seven children, where the fee is waived.
And when the program started, I saw that it was based on three hundred kids, and this year we have two hundred and eighty-nine? So that really hasn't fluctuated, has it?
Well, the first year, it was three hundred and eight, so it's kind of in the middle. And so this year, as we, we budget for, we're probably going to budget, we have to remember that we have that one small group of children this year, real anomaly, where there are ten repeating kindergarten students this year. And so that throws the, we had, we had thought the number for this year would be closer to two eighty, actually, it's closer to two ninety, but if you discount the number of students that are in that repeater group, but some of those children with special needs too. We also, for repeaters, we say, if it's a regular ed student, and the, we recommend repeating, that we don't charge tuition in the second year. But if it's a regular ed student and the parent elects to repeat, then we do charge. We don't have that many of those youngsters typically, in a typical year, anyway. It's also important to realize that when we went to the full-day kindergarten, we were, and the town was funding, a two-hour and thirty-five-minute-a-day program for kids. Because we were concerned about children that wouldn't be part of the full day, we increased the length of the day for the part-time students, and there were only a small number of them, but we increased the length of that day to exactly half the day, which is three hours and some minutes. And so in a sense, what we're paying for, and what parents are paying for, is that increase, albeit for small numbers of students, in that part of the day. So, and we, we didn't make any adjustments to tuitions for that. So what they're paying for is a piece of what we owe the children who elect a half-day, because they're getting a true half-day, and they didn't, it's a little point, but, you know, if we're looking at all the, the possible iterations. We also, we'll be talking about this in the budget, that we, what is a real unknown is how many kindergarten students we'll have overall, when we look at our new practices in terms of encouraging parents to elect an age-appropriate time, as being the age eligible time to attend kindergarten. So in the first year that we do that, one might expect that we'll have fewer holdouts, and therefore, more kids in the kindergarten, and so we're going to budget for one more section, which is about twenty youngsters, but practically speaking, it could be, it could be more than that. That's a real unknown, because we haven't had that kind of experience before, we don't have any data, you know, to go by. So we have to keep that in mind. So we have to keep that in mind.
But also, if, if we have more kids, we'll get more tuition and that covers the cost of the teacher too, right?
I mean, I'm not, with, with the kindergarten increase, I'm not as concerned about two percent, three percent, four percent. It just needs to be enough to pay for the kindergarten, to pay for the program. Whatever percent we think increase is going to cover the program. I don't, I wouldn't want to raise it any more than we thought we needed to pay for the program. So that one's a little different than just comparing it to the school budgets increasing by four percent. Why wouldn't we increase that by four percent in my mind? I would feel like I would only want to see that increase by whatever it needs to, to pay for the program.
So then the question is, what is the program costing us right now?
So, so at our next meeting, we'll be into budgets and we can get that information on the kindergarten, of a recommendation for what that program, we think that's going to cost.
Well.
Do we need to do it now or do we wait?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that when you talk about the cost of the program, there are different players. The program cost was mainly in the year of staffing. So you have different people when we started and different levels of experience and different payrolls. And one year, we had sixteen classes. The second year, we had fourteen. We're talking about maybe sixteen this year. So I'm not sure exactly how to calculate the program costs other than to just calculate the entire cost of kindergarten on what it is this year. Because just with personnel costs, it can vary by thousands of dollars. So.
Well, in some ways, we know what that COLA is for the collective bargaining agreement. And then we'll, you know, we have everybody that's on the top step. Do we have, or do we have people moving on staff?
There's always movement in personnel, you know? So I mean, to, to think that the, how much does this program cost to get the individual teachers and stuff? Just, it's not practical, because it could be different by the time the end of the year and the budget era actually rolls along.
So you can do a calculation, but it will not be the exact number of dollars that we paid in each of the years. It can't be.
And we under, I mean, I understand that, but it's the only number we can work with.
Yeah.
You know, it's the, it's, we have to have a number to work with if we're going to decide what to increase it by. We have to have some basis on which to, how to determine that increase. So we can only have the best numbers we can have to educate ourselves with. And I understand that there's always going to be fluctuation that we can't account for, but we have to have something to base it on.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the same as, like, a special ed budget where we have out-of-district placements. And, you know, those things are moving around and outside tuitions are changing. And, you know, you have a lot more factors of a more variable of costs. I would assume that with this, we have a sense of where we're going with the general costs of. And it could be that.
I think what Dot's saying is, you know, it's the, the individual people. You know, as a person like an M-sixty, you know, thirteen, or are they M-five? You know what I mean?
You don't need.
You know, and, but that, but there's big differences in that. So what we need to do is take, what's, what's an average teacher?
Yeah.
You know, and price it out that way, I think. Is that where, that's what you're getting at? You're not looking at the specific of how we've structured the program. You're looking at a general, what's a teacher cost and what's a parent cost? And how much is the program actually costing?
Yeah.
But we want to know in terms of whether we are breaking even, you know? So, so we can sort of like calculate. I'm looking at, at the slide that Pam sent to us, slide number twenty-two. And there was a data there for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, where he had, you know, two hundred and sixty-two communities that offered tuition free for the kindergarten. Then the amount that we are charging now that thirty-five seventy-five, we had approximately thirty-one communities then. I would, I'm curious to know what's the data today? If you were able to update this screen, just to give us an idea of how things are looking at it right now. Now, let's say that we stick with, you know, the proposed idea of, you know, parent, the increases with the collective bargain agreement, the two percent for the next three years. That will bring us up on year one with a two percent to thirty-six, forty-six, fifty. Year two, thirty-seven, one-nine, forty-three. And year three, thirty-seven, ninety-three, eighty-one. Based on the data for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, we're still within those thirty-two, thirty-one communities out there. So, you know.
That's still, we have that data, Carlos? I'm looking at it right now.
What I'm looking at is the slide that was sent to us.
No, he's talking about the data.
You do have it?
It's, yeah, it's from Strategies for Children. It's a Massachusetts advocacy group. So we have the seventeen, eighteen numbers.
Oh, great.
Two hundred and, I'll share the PDF with you. It's the grid that shows you the numbers of towns.
Oh, great, that's exactly the one.
Yep. So there's two, still two eighty-two that offer full day.
That's more.
And we are, sorry, two hundred and eighty-two communities offer full day K.
Yeah, back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, it was two sixty-two.
Yeah, so there's been an increase in time, yep.
What do you have for the next numbers?
Eighteen hundred to twenty-nine fifty is ten communities. Three thousand to thirty-four seventy-five is twenty-six communities. Thirty-five to forty-nine seventy is thirty-one communities.
I mean, it's the same.
And no full day K is two communities.
Two.
Two from ten, wow.
Yeah.
Well, that's great. So I mean, I'll, even with the increase on the next three years, we're still competitive with them.
But I'd say with the thirty. Because my question is, if we do want to consider tuition-free full-day kindergarten, when do we, when do we need to start thinking about that? I'm assuming that it's sort of too late for the next school year?
Where would we come up with a million dollars?
Where are we coming up with a million dollars? So I'm assuming that it's sort of too late for the next budget session.
Yeah.
At the time that we did the original sliding scale, which was the state scale, because we're accepting their money, we could choose the tuition that we wanted, because they give you a framework for the scale. And it goes up according to the state median income. So the state's template, if you will, goes up every year by the cost of that. So, but at the time, even though you could choose which tuition you wanted to start with for your highest, it couldn't go above four thousand dollars. Now, there is no state funding now, so we could argue that we could choose anything that we want to choose. But that was a requirement at the time. And the two hundred and eighty-two communities are tuition-free.
But it also worked that we didn't need to go that high based on what our costs were and the amount of people that we're paying. So, you know, we didn't want to put an undue burden on parents.
The answer is yes, we could consider it now, but it's going to be a challenge no matter when.
Yes, I guess realistically, when could we?
Well, I think that's what we have to, we have to decide what do we want to try and target? And then we have to start talking to the community about, are you ready to do this? We think, if, if we think it's important.
Right. And that's something we've never even, I mean, we've never taken a poll. Who says we should or shouldn't pursue free full-day kindergarten? Who thinks it's fine, tuition-based, and who thinks it should go to free at some point? That was some, we haven't even ever talked about that since this all.
Right. Okay, so at our next meeting, can you get us the, the proposal? Are we good with that?
The kindergarten fees?
Yeah. And then we can also start, we can figure out what we want to talk about. And we, we'll take a poll at our next meeting. If we can get us any updated information about full-day kindergarten programs. And, because we can look at the, we'll be talking about it five-year vision later tonight. Okay, now athletic fees.
So the last increase was in two thousand thirteen. And that was when we went to from three to three twenty-five. And at the same time, we added a cap, not a cap, a, what do we call it?
Surcharge.
Surcharge, good word for, on hockey fees, mainly because of the cost of the ice hockey program, ice rental program.
Is there a multi-student cap?
Yes, there is. I don't remember the figures, but there's a, yeah, there's a family cap.
Family, right, yeah.
It's like one child, two child, children and a family.
Okay.
I think that stayed six hundred with the last increase. When we went from three to three twenty-five, I think that stayed at six hundred.
It was six, women, I, I have that a lot.
The other thing is to know, though, is with the, the cost of the coaches, which is a big part of the program, except in sports, like we, we have to rent facilities. But in terms of that, the coaching stipends do not increase every three years as teacher salaries would. In fact, it could go two cycles, for example, before there's any increase in that. So even though this year, there is a two percent across the board increase, the last time we bargained a three-year contract, we made some changes in the scale for equity and other kinds of reasons. It didn't increase everyone's. And yet, there was two years in between when, you know, we didn't have a percentage increase across the board. So, so that was.
So there is a, there's a family cap of six twenty-five.
There's also a surcharge in dance, isn't there?
Dance is its own fee.
Oh, right, okay.
But it's three twenty-five, so it's the same.
So just hockey surcharge.
And rowing is separate.
Right.
Yes.
And, yeah, and then there's an ice hockey surcharge. So.
And those revenues, of course, support the program. They become offsets on the program. And, and they've grown because we have more students at the high school. So they have grown a bit for that reason, more athletes.
So I had pulled out the old budgets and I'd sent you guys some notes on exact, on athletic costs. And the expended were through, two thousand ten through two thousand sixteen, were actual costs. The two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen are budgeted costs, because we don't, we haven't gotten that final one yet. And then the offset is there. And then the, the net cost is, you know, taking that. So we're talking about the fees that would go against the offset. So, John, how are we doing on fees for this year? Are we trending consistent? Is it growing a tiny bit like it has been the last couple of years?
You know, it's hard to say, because I mean, I looked at, you know, the first payment really for this year was a hundred and thirty thousand. I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent, really, you know?
Because we've only had fall sports.
My guess is that we'll be in that same range. You know, we, on this, you see a jump that happened in sixteen and seventeen. A lot of that jump isn't necessarily new students, but some of it had to do with the Pilgrim Arena and the way they decided to handle their, their details and their fees. Before, they, we didn't get so many fields, we just got a share of the fees from them after they paid expenses for the hockey games. What they did was they switched over a couple of years ago whereby they give us the money on the fees and then we pay the details and the other coaches and the expenses that are associated with it. So it's, it's not necessarily comparable to, you know, a growth.
Okay.
And it's hard to quantify exactly how much extra fees that came into our receipts that actually gets paid out.
And, and.
But you can, you can bank on some growth, because there are more students.
Are there other income generation going into the athletic revolving account? Because it seems like we're taking out more than.
Game receipts, there's game receipts and fees in here.
Okay. But of what you gave us, so that's the total revenue that's gone into the athletic revolving account each year?
Yes.
Game receipts.
Okay.
That's what the amount column?
This is from fee, collectively.
The gain and fees.
Can you explain the columns?
Yeah.
The quote's right here, can you explain it? It's not up there, but.
Okay, so John gave us the revenues typed up.
Right.
So I was curious as to what are our real costs? So I went through the budget book each year. And expended was for those columns that we knew, the actual audited costs. That was the true amount, I guess, the actual cost of the athletic program. And then the offset was what we put down as the offset for it. And then the net is the cost. And for seventeen and eighteen, the expended is actually a budget, because I didn't have the final expended costs for those two years.
So where does the amount, I'm just being dense here, I apologize. But where does the amount that John provided fit into those other costs?
Well, that's what would cover the offset.
So we had a balance in the offset. So we, we collect two seventy-nine, but we spend it three twelve, six hundred. And, and that was a function of, you know, several years ago when we did the Fields Project, we actually preserved some of the athletic revolving revenue to grow a little balance, because it was that account that was actually providing the, the, the funds, the proof of funds that we had sort of waiting for letters of credit to be collected.
And that's why there was a zero offset one year, right? Is that correct? In two thousand thirteen, we didn't do an offset because of the field project.
We were preserving, yeah, some of that as, because what we need is proof of funding in order to enter into, you know, expenditures for the most part. So we had the proof of funding, so we had built up a balance in the revolving account. So now, you know, we're, we're, we're reducing the revolving account by over-expending.
With the offset.
With the offset, you know, which is basically greater than the amount of revenues that we're taking in. You know, during the budget process, we will look at all the, the revolving accounts. I mean, we'll be able to continue this pace for this year. And, you know, at the three twenty-three and probably next year, because the balance is still in good shape.
So as of two thousand fifteen, we started using the revolving account to add to the offset of the budget.
We said, yeah, we started working it down again. You know, because we built it up, you don't, we don't want to leave a built-up balance there. We just had to have proof of fund, because I think we were holding somewhere along the lines of two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars of letters of credit, you know, for the field project, which basically are all paid now.
But at some point, we're going to have to not stop do, we're going to have to stop doing that.
Doing what?
At some point, that revolving account.
Yeah, at some point, we'll have to slow down to what we're collecting.
Yeah.
You know, it's probably, we'd want to keep a balance in there, you know, somewhere in that three hundred thousand dollar range, so we can budget with assurance, knowing, well, we have three hundred thousand dollars. We're not sure what the collections are going to be, but we can at least budget this. You know, and then we'd, we'd roll it over every year, similar to how, how we do Circuit Breaker.
Right.
We know what we will collect, you know, in this year, and that goes into next year's budget.
All right, well, I, I also noted that our expended athletic costs have been rising pretty significantly. And we've been able to offset them. And we haven't increased the athletic fee. And our net cost has been not so bad. I compared two thousand twelve year to two thousand eighteen because of, you know, I wanted to remove the two thousand thirteen sort of change in there. So we've been managing the net cost, but I'm concerned our actual costs have been rising quite high. And so I personally would be in favor of an increase in the athletic fee to help offset that increase in the cost, which I'm sure is also. which I'm sure is also related to the number of students in the high school.
Can I also just, I heard something this past fall. We had a lot of teams in, in playoffs, and we hosted a few, which is great, but I heard from somebody, I don't even know who, that we don't get to keep all of the gate receipts for an MIAA playoff at some point?
Yeah, that's probably true. That's, that's probably true.
Is it essentially paying for it for the privilege of hosting? I understand that. Our beautiful, beautiful facilities, but then we don't get to keep any of the gate receipts?
Oh, are you talking when our teams are not involved or when they are involved?
I don't know. This is a random conversation, but it sort of rang a bell that that didn't seem overly fair.
Well, if we're being hosted somewhere else, then.
I think we, we actually had this conversation a year or two ago, too, that there was a period of time we were never able to host.
Right.
And so we felt like that we really needed to be good citizens and step up and start hosting. So it may be that we get nothing when we host, but there are times when we are hosted. And so that just sort of is the right thing to do.
Works, all works out.
Right.
Okay.
But I think you are correct, that we don't get all the gate receipts for the games that we participate in.
Yeah, or at least at a certain level.
It's a different issue, but, but we can find that out.
Well, and I'm sure the MIAA is paying for the officials and that kind of thing, so.
Likely.
That cost. Okay, so can maybe, John, can you give us a recommendation for our next meeting about an athletics fee increase? And maybe you can, and we'll have some more idea of where we are with the revolving account and some forecasts on that.
Sure.
Okay. I mean, does.
Yeah, I mean, five years is a long time to not increase it at all. You know, it doesn't have to be hundreds of dollars.
Right.
To not increase it at all is, it's a long time.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Okay. We can move on. Okay, so six point two to continue review of materials that support the Hingham Public School five-year vision. With this, I, this is, I'm gonna do this quickly. At, when we met with advisory, I shared with them the PowerPoint presentation, and then I had done a first draft of two PowerPoints that we would put on the website that provided more basic information about Hingham Public Schools, and then some budget sort of historic information. And we updated those and corrected those from some feedback from that meeting, and then added in the current staffing numbers. And so I just wanted to make sure that you all had that information, and you can take a look at that. One thing that came up in the advisory committee meeting were some questions about the special education budget. And so I was going to add to the budget, wanna work with Liz and Dr. Gallo on this, of providing some more historic data about the special education budget and the percentage trends, because that would probably be a good thing for people to just have put in that.
We have some of that in the typical budget here for special education. And we have a data as well for doing a presentation for CPAC.
Yeah. So now that we're, we're fine tuning this, the other thing I want to talk about was when we have a final document and when we're ready to present. And I looked at the budget calendar and I'm thinking at the January twentieth, we have a meeting with the advisory committee to review the budget. So it'd probably be good to do our dress rehearsal presentation there. And then I've been in touch with the people, with the PTO presidents about their January thirty-first event, and there's a possibility, depending on what kind of questions come back from the community, that we might, who knows? I think right now, I just want to answer questions, but if it's appropriate, we might do a condensed version of it there. And then I was also thinking of possibly, we can get the presentation to a tight ten minutes, if it's possible, talking my town meeting cadence of voice. At the February sixth presentation, when the school department presents to the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee the budget, that we run through it there as well. That would be, you know, on TV and to the community and provide some context for the.
Is that the joint meeting or just?
Yeah, it's the joint meeting, the February sixth meeting, so it's not the final one. So that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Can I just ask you a question in terms of the five, five-year vision plan? Did we?
On the grid or on the PowerPoint?
On the grid.
Yeah.
Did we track solar power? I believe that was on the continuing, I think that was on the opportunity to innovate and explore somewhere out there. Actually, is that the PowerPoint or is this the PowerPoint? Liz, I'm looking at this.
Yeah.
That's the grid.
That's the grid, yeah.
Right.
It was there.
It was.
Was it there?
Yeah.
It was, yeah, I don't see it.
Okay, where do you wanna?
I think we had on the opportunities to innovate and explore. Would that?
Do you wanna put it on the looking forward column?
Looking forward, that would be fine.
Okay.
I know that's part of the principle of the high school goals as well, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So if we can, so if you have any other comments at our next budget working session, let me know what you think, but I think we're, we're getting fine tuned, and we'll want to upload it to the website so people can take a look at it. Okay, so, new business, to discuss foster school statement of interest update from the MSBA, including consideration of resubmitting and SOI application in the spring of two thousand eighteen, with action as appropriate. So since our last meeting, and it's been in the media, we received information back from the MSBA that we were not accepted in this round for foster school. And, but they encouraged us to resubmit the project. And I know I've been talking with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Mary Power, and she encourages us to resubmit. So the school building committee's meeting on Wednesday, and as they take direction from us, wanted to get people's thoughts on resubmitting the SOI and for the next go-round. That would, the window would open January.
Windows opens on January fifth and closes in early April, as it did last year. We would refresh our old application. We don't have to replace it, we can refresh it, but we can also add to it changes that have occurred since then. We might want to mention, for example, the amount of facilities work, maintenance work, and upgrading that we've done in that sense. There might be other things that we want to add. I have verified that we still have to go through the process of getting approval by the school committee and by the Board of Selectmen. So that's important to know, so that we can set out a timeline that allows that, because sometimes it's hard, other things get squished in.
Yeah.
So, so I would suggest that if, if that is the goal, and personally, I hope that it is, to resubmit, that we do as much as we can early on and not get in a bind, you know, as we go through the budget of not having time.
The good thing about resubmitting is it's sort of like foresaw that this probably could happen during town meeting. That is why we're sort of like, I'm left it open, that if it didn't happen the first year, we could reapply.
Yes, we expect, this is not an unexpected happening.
So with that, yes, I would move that we do a reapply. I'm, you know, obviously a little disappointed that we didn't, we not accepted the first round. So let's hope that the second round will work. So definitely move that we reapply.
Okay, is any?
I would second that. I can't see why we wouldn't reapply.
Discussion necessary.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor for reapplying?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So.
And so we don't need to think about a warrant item for this.
Right.
Because we, last year, funded at town meeting the establishment of the building committee and the funding that went with it, which was the two hundred fifty-five thou, fifty thousand for the feasibility study itself.
Do we have to do a formal vote, or does that count as the, as our vote?
That seems to be a formal vote for me.
Okay. I didn't know, like, MSBA language to.
I will get the words, though, Liz, and, you know.
Yeah, we should have a warrant that has the specific language.
The, yeah, probably at some point, I'll get the words, because the vote may have to be their word. So we may have to take the vote again, but this will be a good vote to get it started, so.
Yeah, and then if you can let us know what formal vote the Board of Selectmen have to take, because they're ready to add it to their agenda.
Both of them had the words that they, they wanted specifically to use, so I'll have to, you know, that, that's, we'll, we'll go through that and then grab it up to say.
Okay. And then do, I was thinking about some thoughts on, you know, like, where do we go from here? Does anyone have thoughts on, you know, we have, the school building committee is in existence, and so we can, with Ed there as a representative, you know, we can maybe consider recommending some tasks for them to, suggesting some things for them to work on that could help move the process forward. I know one thing that was raised was maybe them looking into the floodplain issues a little bit more, and potentially if there's flood insurance needed, I know Mary Power mentioned that to me.
That's an issue that, that the committee has talked about, maybe not specific which insurance company they're contacted, but that's, that is not an unknown concern.
Yeah, her, what she passed on to me was, yeah, not what company, but, you know, the potential costs that we would, the town would incur, if, if we would incur it, because of the water issues.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then I would, I would be interested as if the committee would be willing to look at, you know, what are current estimates of building elementary schools in the state, so that we have an idea, because if we have to go it alone, we need to know that. And then also consider looking at some other towns and how they're communicating their building projects, because like Wellesley, Newton, Arlington, you know, Wellesley was just one of the towns accepted this round. But I looked on their website, and, you know, they're, they have multiple schools they need to rebuild, and they're communicating out to their community about, you know, we don't know if we're gonna accept it or not, but these are the steps that we'll have to take. And, you know, I think that's something, we have to be a little realistic about this and the condition of the school. If, you know, how long can we wait for the MSBA versus we have to take some action?
The, the Foster School Building Committee is churning to cook on the various concerns that you're raising.
Okay.
This is not new concerns, new thoughts. Sounds as if I'll take good notes Wednesday night and, and get back to you, because.
That would be great.
The, the things that you've mentioned and some of the things that you haven't mentioned have been on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, because one thing, I've had some people, after the article was, you know, after the news came out, I've had people also that have asked me, what are the options for any kind of renovation if we don't ever get state funding? And we can afford to build a new school, or it won't happen. What, what are our other options?
Absolutely.
I had another thought as well. As you know, we are going forward as we speak in terms of the overall master plan that we kind of interrupted to take advantage of this, and now are getting back to, but also there was the issue of doing the external enrollment projection, which we need both for the overall master plan and also for this project. A year ago, when we called MSBA as we were working on the SOI to say, can we go forward? Because that's when we were originally going to do our enrollment projection. Can we move forward on that? And she said something that, that sometimes they say a lot, and that is, don't get too far ahead of us, that kind of. So she was somewhat discouraging of us moving forward at that point with the level of unknown, you know, then, ahead of us. But I called her again the other day. I did speak with her before she sent the letter. She sent the letter to let us know we would not be on the list, rather than us read it on the agenda that was of the upcoming meeting, and she was very encouraging, so, so I called her back to ask that question. And she thought, that she thought it would be a wonderful idea for us to go forward with the enrollment. That's one more unknown out of the way, and that can help a bit now that we have this unanticipated delay. And she cautioned that we shouldn't spend more money than we need to on this projection. She offered that there are two, there are two firms in the state that do most of the projections that they use in other projects in other communities. But she said sometimes when you go with a more nationally-known company, that what you're paying for in large part is for the report. And what they need to translate into their tool, they call it their enrollment projection tool, is simply the data. So that we should be working on getting the data that they need that we can use for their tool and that we can use. And, and a grander report is not necessarily the most advantageous thing to do. I did speak with Linda and Ray last week as they were going over the budget for this building meeting, to be sure we included what we need to include for what we need, such as giving some parents a level of comfort that the building is safe and that kind of thing. I mentioned to them the enrollment projection and wondered if they might be part of some of the thinking that goes into that in those projections. Folks come to town, they ask about what we may know internally, about trends in building or about special projects that are going on here right now. We have the two projects that are in process, one above the ground and the other not yet in the ground, on Beale Street and Avalon. And so her conversation was very helpful and speaks to my frugal thoughts about a lot of things. But also that they could be that kind of sounding board, because all of us could think of something that, I bet those demographers never even thought of this, that this is happening in our town. So I think they would be open to participating as part of that project, too, because it is a greater part of the whole building project.
Now, is there two different dates, John and Dr. Gallo, that in on the MSBA could notify us whether we have been accepted? Because it seems that when I met as an individual with the Chairman of the MSBA, Deb Glorberg, in Wayman, she had mentioned that perhaps we'd find out by the end of the school year. As a matter of fact, you know, Wayman found out that they had been accepted before, you know, like, three, four months ago. So I'm wondering if there's two dates where they notify school districts.
Well, last year, they didn't approve all of their money until the spring. Remember, we found that out last year.
So that's, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
But this year, in my understanding, is that they've expended at least a plan for all the money, penny on the sales taxes, the money, all the money that they have allotted for this year.
So I'm wondering, I mean, do you think that we will not find out whether we have been? So I'm wondering, I mean, do you think that we will not find out whether we have been accepted to the end of 2018 again?
No, I think.
I think a year from this month, we'll find out for.
Because they also have the different programs, because they have the boiler, roof, boiler, window.
Different due dates.
Program, which is one notification date, and then the full building project is another. But we can look into that too. All right.
And, and perhaps they would get some additional revenues that they don't know about. But last year was kind of anomaly of having some acceptances that didn't get handed out. But there's one thing related to this that I do think we need to talk about. We've got a June twentieth date looming for, um, town meeting warrant, uh, January twentieth.
Yeah.
Town meeting warrant articles. And, uh, so we have to have some discussion about whether or not anyone has any thoughts about that, because there are not a lot of meetings before now and then. And, um, I don't have anything particular in mind, but I don't want that date to go by and say, oh, my gosh, we might have done whatever.
Okay, well, um, I think that's something, I don't think we have anything on foster school for town meeting for this time around.
No.
But we can keep that. I'll add that for January eighth. And Long Range Planning has a Long Range Planning Subcommittee meeting Wednesday also. So maybe they can come to us with a recommendation for the January eighth meeting if there's something we want to submit as a town meeting warrant article. Okay. Um, all right, seven point two. We have several policy first readings. I will let Cynthia, who chairs our policy subcommittee, um, take us through seven point two, seven point three, and seven point four on the agenda.
Seven point two is regarding policy section four. The whole section is on fiscal management. And John took the policy section, reviewed it to make sure that the policy is actually what we do and that it aligns with our current practices. He suggested several minor changes which are noted in red in the packet. The subcommittee is recommending those changes to the school committee for the policy. And then, um, also in your packet are changes made to the Student Activity Agency account procedures, which do not need to be voted on. Those are John's recommended changes as a result of some work that the Masbo group did. John, do you want to comment on that?
Um, yeah, so we had, uh, the high school and middle school student activity agency accounts, um, reviewed by Masbo. And the intention of that was to sort of get a good checklist for items that we should, um, take into account in order to move our policies and procedures to meet the guidelines for the DESE. So this year when we call for an audit, that we're, um, you know, likely to have fewer findings. Typically whenever you get in an audit, uh, you're going to get some findings. But by getting ourselves with the structure and, and moving to meet all the checklists that they provided in this review, I think would be much better documented and in better shape for when we call for the audit.
So we're, we're just voting on the, the policy, section four, in the entirety with all those changes. Again, pretty much all of them are just either wording changes or, you know, changes just to clarify exactly, um, what the policy subject, subsection is in regard to or, you know, how we actually do things. So does anyone have any questions about that? Not, I mean, this is just a first reading, so if you have any questions, you can let us know.
I had a couple comments, questions. So on four point two point three, um, we talk about the preliminary budget. And there was nothing changed on this, but, um, it looks like, I just want, I made a note. It looks like we actually have to, we should be taking a vote on, um, on the sort of status of the budget before we have our public hearing.
Because it says we'll adopt.
Yeah.
Say that again?
So it says in the policy that the school committee shall adopt a preliminary annual budget in sufficient time to allow for presentation of the budget in local news, media, and sufficient time to allow appropriate, uh, for prior to the school budget hearing. So, um, and my recollection is, as we go through the process, we do come to, you know, where we are in the status of the budget. But, um, but these words kind of stood out to me like, oh, okay, we're actually supposed to adopt.
Yeah, I guess the question is the definition of adopt.
Yeah. But then we have budget adoption in the next.
Next, yeah. Right.
It's not a big.
Yep, no, it makes sense.
I think what that meant when we, like we wrote it, is a process we do go through, but you don't take a formal vote. But after we've done the presentations and prior to our going to the joint meeting, we always talk about what is it that you want to go forward with? So I think that's what this refers to. But I agree it could be really mis.
And that distinction that was made in the next section, the budget adoption, it says it will be adopted by formal vote.
Right, okay, yeah.
You know, there is a distinction between the two.
Then four point two point six. It says under the, oh, under public, the first line, "School committee deliberations on the preliminary and final budget shall normally be considered an open session." I think we need to delete the word normally.
To always?
Well, no, I just.
Just take, take normal.
Yeah, because of the open meeting law has changed since 2005. I think that's the distinction. That if normally is in there, then it's assuming it's not.
Okay.
And then I noted the paragraph about school councils. That school councils shall annually review the school budget.
Yeah, we talked about that. A long time.
So I know that it came up at the high school, school council meeting. But I think if we're going to have them do that, which is.
Well, I believe it's the law.
Okay. We just need to make sure that they're in the timing of our schedule, so we get some feedback from them prior to our public hearing? Okay.
And they all were, we had that discussion at our September, I think it was, administrative council, that it's important that we all do the same thing in that regard and that they understand that they need to discuss the budget with their council. Of course, at the point that they are discussing it, I'm not sure that we would have the full, we would have been through the full process, in a sense we don't want to be, but.
So when do they do that is really the question? When do you schedule that school council meeting?
Well, I, um, I think what we told them was that we expected that they would seek input prior to, or at the time that they're presenting their individual requests. And that they would share information about the budget, the administrative budget that we put forth.
Okay. Um, then four point two point nine. I was wondering why you deleted board to increase the levels of expenditures if so voted by the school committee?
That was definitely something that came from John. There is a reason. I think it was because of him not thinking that we needed to vote every single time. That that would be overly burdensome. It was more about instead of putting guidelines in there as opposed to specific.
So when I read it, I was thinking of, um, well, the stacker thing. You know, like of, if there was something that came up that we wanted to, it was our direction that we wanted the budget to change mid-year. Then, then we should still have that right to do that if funds are available.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not unlike really what we just talked about earlier tonight, but on a very small scale, of that you want to engage with stacker.
Right.
And, um, and so I said, well, I don't feel comfortable. And we're just saying we'll find it somewhere as if there's some magical pool. But rather I would tell you where I would recommend we would get the money that you were requesting.
Right.
I, I mean, I don't feel that I could or that any superintendent could knowingly say, oh, it's okay to put in an amount that I believe that we, you know, that we couldn't support. I feel I needed to, would need to tell you that. So the school committee always has the authority to, if, if you were to do that routinely, any school committee, then I think that the powers that be that oversee us in terms of budget allocations would be kind of suspicious about the real other numbers.
Yeah.
But in a special situation or emergency situation or that kind of thing.
Yeah, the way it's worded, it just seemed overly, you know, you're not going to, if we're over by fifty bucks, the committee's not going to mention anything, you know, it's not, it just seemed too generic of saying everything whereby, you know, when there's large issues, we always bring them to your attention and suggest how we, how we intend to handle them.
In fact, I thought the wording was, I had to read it a few times just to understand it. So this seemed more what the notion was, that, um, you can ask us to do anything, but then we need to tell you what it will cost and where we would expect we could find the money, or that there's no way that we think we could find this amount of money and ask you to reconsider.
Okay. Then four point three. I, um, I want to know why you deleted quarterly and, um, and then, wait a minute. Oh, I didn't agree with this change of deleting quarterly or when requi, or when requi, uh, and just to.
Changing the word.
And when required to just when requi, when required.
Well, quarterly, I mean, if you look at quarterly, you know, there's nothing to report really in September, so it just didn't.
Right, so then you don't need, so.
Right, I mean, you know, it says, it says quarterly, it's like, you know, I don't think that we should, I don't think we should spend a lot of time going through motions to say, okay, here's your quarterly report, there's nothing to report.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's where this gets, gets into it. And then, um, you know, you, you want to have some data and, and make it worthwhile to have a report. You know, clearly as we, even as we go along, if some significant expenditures happen, we address them, you know, as we're going along.
So I, I agree with that, that, and I also found in four point three point two that you changed it from quarterly to periodically. I'm not, I don't, I'm not raising this because I don't believe you don't report the information. I'm looking at it generically and that I would rather that we have a set schedule and that if, like in September, there's nothing to report, okay, fine, we don't need a report. That's the normal quarterly schedule, but we don't need a report. But changing this to periodically or when required potentially could then be less reporting. And so.
And I think it also doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't say who requires it. Like are we, like when required, who is the person requiring the reporting? Is it when we require, I, maybe if it's, maybe it's changed, maybe if it's changed to when requested by the school committee? So financial reporting when requested?
I, I.
I think, I think she'll agree with you, Liza.
I think if it's on a set schedule, it's on a set schedule. And then if we need it more than that, we can ask for it more than that. But having it on a set timeline.
Well, I guess our question was, do we do that? I think that was the.
We've been trying to.
Well, and I, I, you know, to Liza's point, if it, if there isn't a need to, then that can just be stated. True.
I would just remind you that the one piece of paper you get with those reports isn't one hour of work. The budget is this, and it requires going through every section of it to make it. So, so when you say, can we do that?
Right.
You can ask for it, you, you approve the policy. So yes, can you, can we do that?
Well, that's two separate issues, I think.
Well, it is, but.
Now, I, I'm looking at this objectively and to me, having it, uh, I could be, I'm, maybe I'm just me, but having a set schedule is better for me than having it as a periodically. And I'm looking at this like ten years down the line. None of us are here, you know.
Well, if we were going to do that, then I would suggest instead of quarterly, we ask John to look at the year as a whole and decide when are the most appropriate times for him to report on a regular basis. You know, what, if it's September and there's nothing to report, then why have a September report? You know, why not have it in November if there's actually something to report in November? You know, does it have to be on a, on a fiscal quarterly basis? Or can it be just periodically as appropriate? But stated that way.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll have to talk, I think, probably talk about that once more.
Yeah, I mean, because, yeah, if you look at the practice, I mean, typically around the budget time, you know, sometime in February is when there's some good data to be looking at. And then we tend to go like, you know, we start looking at in May and then we may get two or three done in May to June, you know, as we're going along. That's really what makes sense. That's not quarterly.
Well, we tend to get second, third, and fourth quarter around, you know. It's not on a precise date of the, you know, exact accounting date. But, um, why don't you guys come back and think about that?
And that, that was also in.
It was in four point three and four point three point two.
Point two.
We, uh, we should add that we've added in here what we don't always do. And that is we added to this section the procedures, particularly for the student activities, because there were more changes in the procedures than there were in the policy itself, and some fairly significant ones. And so that's in there for your review, although we're simply voting.
I didn't have any comments on that.
Could you also consider including to four point two three, second paragraph, "School committee facilities tour," towards the end, the award shall be conducted as needed?
And what, what shall be conducted?
School committee facility tour, um, tour of the school department facilities that we will highlight needs for programs and buildings shall be conducted as needed. Perhaps.
Just finish the thought.
Yes. Shall be conducted as need, needed, or as deemed necessary.
What, what section was that, Charles?
Yeah, because we didn't do it this year.
Four point two three.
Four point two three.
You know how this, this year we didn't have to, you know, perhaps just to have it there uniformly? Are you following me, John? So on the four point two three, second item, add, towards the end, shall be conducted as needed.
The facilities tour, because we didn't do one this year.
Yeah, 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 right, 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 yeah, yeah, okay. Right.
Good point.
Yeah, that is a good point.
Okay, any other thoughts? I mean, obviously, we have time to, over the holidays to review this.
Yes, send us.
Well, we don't have to do the, the, at the next meeting.
No, we don't, we don't.
We did change the policy.
All right, so moving on to policy six point two, age requirements. This was, we had a follow-up discussion at our last meeting regarding the entrance age and are recommending that we add the paragraph highlighted in red in your folder, which states, recognizing that it is generally in the best interest of a child and his/her classmates to maintain classes within a reasonable chronological and developmental range. The Hingham Public Schools expect parents to enroll their children in kindergarten for the first year they are eligible to attend. Parents with concerns about their child readiness should reach out to the principal of the school at which their child will attend. So we're adding that in the hopes that it'll help clarify the expectations of the Hingham Public Schools and also support the efforts that the administration is doing to educate the parents about kindergarten readiness.
And I would take that document that has the changes in procedures, preface it with this. So that this of the policy as amended and then the different protocols.
Anyone have thoughts? My only comment is I think instead of reach out, we should say contact.
Okay. It's more concrete.
Yeah.
All right. Grab them as they walk by.
Well, it's all, it's, that, that also is-
And, sorry.
It's a little more open-ended and, yeah, but. Michelle, did you have?
Yeah, I was just thinking, does it need to end with contact them? I guess, I guess.
I looked at some other towns and they use the word contact.
Contact, okay.
So.
What is the word they use?
Contact, instead of reach out. It's just a little bit more.
Yeah, it's a little more forceful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitive.
Were you thinking like within a certain timeframe?
No, I think I was just thinking of, should it, it's, I guess I was just trying to think of, instead of parents with concerns about their child's readiness, maybe just parents who may want more information about their child's readiness or a child with the-
Isn't that the point of the?
That's the point of the forum.
It would be a concern about readiness, it might not be a concern about the child.
Or I, yes, I guess, I guess I was just thinking that-
Or information in general about their child?
Yes, that's what I was thinking, I don't want people to feel like, oh, I can only call if I'm worried about something, to talk about-
With questions about their child readiness?
We just, we're trying to make people know that that's the place to start. If they have a concern about their child not starting kindergarten at that particular age. That's, that's where you go first, so to speak.
Right, because you're just, because otherwise you should just, if you don't have concerns, you should be sending them.
If you change to questions, it could go either way.
Right. Yeah, no, I, concerns works.
No, can think about it. Okay, any other thoughts on that right now? All right, then moving on to one point seven, which is acceptance of gifts and major fundraising. This stemmed from the discussions we had regarding the signage at the schools. And it's intended to address the issue of permanent signage, because we had reached consensus previously as a committee that the temporary signage should be addressed and decision should be made by the building principals. So we are recommending removing the existing third paragraph of the policy and essentially simplifying that and replacing it with the following. Gifts of any ma- any, sorry, gifts of any value promoting private sponsorship or commercial activity, such as permanent signage, private funds, real property, or services, shall be approved by the school committee and conformed to all applicable town bylaws. All other gifts shall follow the guidelines specified in procedures one point seven A, B, and C. We're really trying to address the issue of commercial activity, permanent promotion.
Can we get a copy of the procedures?
Sure. And just add it to the next packet or?
Are procedures one point seven A, B, and C, are they on the screen?
No.
No, got it.
Liza just asked.
No, they're the ones that tell how much, what value projects the principals can accept in your behalf and at what level those things have to come to the school committee.
So basically, those procedures, like Dot just said, specify, you know, above a certain level, this has to come to the school committee. This is specifically saying, no matter what the value, if it's commercial or promoting something, it has to come to us. And, and conformed to the town bylaws, of which that's a whole nother checklist of things to, to look through.
Simplifies the policy.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
No, that last paragraph was kind of convoluted when you wrote it, I realized.
Okay.
What about, I'm just thinking of things, like what about companies that donate funds to like senior night? And then-
But this is permanent signage.
Except it says permanent signage or blah, 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 or services. So what if someone is providing, so what if you know a photographer? Who's doing, who donates a photo booth, but has business cards out promoting that they do senior portraits or sports photography? Like would that have to come to the school committee based on the way this is worded?
Is that considered a gift?
Well, it would, if it's just truly, as long as they weren't trying to promote themselves. I mean, yeah, there's some component of promoting yourself just by doing it. But as long as they're not, the whole point was promoting themselves. So if you've got signs promoting yourself, you're handing out coupons to come get some other pictures later on, you're giving out your business cards.
Right.
Anything like that, that would be a problem. But if somebody just sets up a photo booth and is taking pictures.
No, that's what I'm saying.
And nobody knows that you happen to be a professional photographer by the way you're doing it, then that wouldn't-
But that's exactly your point. Your point is that that person is going to want to capitalize on being there at the senior night. Might say, hey, I do senior pictures too, which is totally valid for them. Now, that doesn't, in my opinion, fall under as a gift because that person's being recompensed for their time?
No, that's what I'm saying, so sometimes it would-
It's a donation.
It might be a donation, yes. Or even just a local shop in town might buy the favors that kids are taking when they leave and sticking a business card or something in there, you know what I mean?
One of the examples that I think Dot raised was the, um, book covers? Agenda, the book covers, yes, thank you, that, um, that a local business had donated, but, you know, splashed all over the book cover was the business name.
Right.
So that wouldn't fly probably. You know, I, I don't know, you're right, that's, that would, that's a-
Well, it just would have to be approved by the school committee.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe it's fine to keep it here, you just have to sort of let folks know at the PTOs and various organizations that if people are making donations of goods or services and expect any quid pro quo for that, then that needs to be approved.
Yeah, I think the point of it is if there's any kind of commercial-
Activity.
Advertising activity on school grounds, we want to know.
Mm-hmm.
Even something. We didn't want to get into micromanaging, but-
That's the only thing I was worried about, how often will that, how often will that happen though, because?
But it's hard to dot every I, cross every T without.
All right, let's noodle on that one.
It would include donors of food and so on, then, in a sense, too.
Right, yes, good point, yes.
They can win a package that says Mary's Cookies or-
Yes, that's true, too. Well, thank you.
That's why it's a first reading.
That would take it too low, you know, that takes it too-
Yeah, no, exactly, right.
You don't, you don't want to get into that.
We don't.
No, that's true. Approving the snacks for like the sleepover.
You need to let some things ride and just let the administration make the decision and not worry about it.
Well, now I'm thinking about it at the South Social. They get donations for food and it's from local businesses.
You can't even buy pizzas that don't have a box that has the name of the company.
But isn't then the senior night also run by the PTO?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's not a school run.
So would that be the difference if it's run by the PTO?
Technically, they're not students anymore. That senior night.
True, and it's not a school-sponsored event. Senior night, it is a PTO sponsored event.
Yeah, but this all came out of, you know, things that booster clubs were doing, so I don't know that they're any different than a PTO to some extent, so. We'll have to think about it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, seven point five, to review the fiscal nineteen budget calendar and upcoming school committee dates and responsibilities. So I just wanted to, the next time we see each other will be on a Thursday night. I just wanted to go through the schedule again.
I have one request about the schedule.
Yes.
And it's a personal change. And that is because I'm sure that when John put December twenty eighth, that the budget would be due to you. He was thinking that's a Friday and I wouldn't be working over the weekend. Given that I need those three extra weekend days to finish what is, finish the presentation, not the, I mean, we'll have the numbers and so on. Finish the presentation. Typically, the day that it's due is at the end of the holiday break, not almost in the middle of it. And it's a short, it's a short break this year.
So change it to what, the first?
Second?
Second?
Second.
Change it to January second?
Or New Year's Day, or, but just the, there was a couple extra, I had counted on those couple extra days, so.
Yeah, pretty sure we're not going to inundate you with emails asking where it is done, so.
On New Year's Eve, if you're.
Yeah.
I don't have anything more interesting.
It is a page turner, so you never know.
That's right.
All right.
I'm looking forward to reading it on New Year's Eve, but okay.
So, so we will have on Thursdays in January, we have a budget work session, which is not televised in here, seven o'clock. And then we have two regular school committee meetings in January, so then Monday, the eighth, and the, where's it at, one?
Not in here.
Oh, it's not on here. No, oh, yeah, no, it's not on here. Twenty second.
It's the twenty second.
Oh, wait, there's the next page.
It's still not there.
No, it's not in here. Okay, so we'll add that in here.
It is the twenty second, I realized that earlier today and I talked with Pam.
Yeah.
It is the twenty second.
I think I probably told Pam to put in the original stages and that's what this probably is.
So, and then FYI, on February twelfth, besides the formal budget hearing, we're also going to get, have a presentation from BU on the social emotional survey. And the task force will have worked, heard it prior to that. So, um, but, um, so as we go through our work sessions on Thursday nights in January, then we will have the presentation, or we'll have the meeting with the advisory committee, January twentieth, which is a Saturday. And that is the education subcommittee and anyone else from the advisory committee that wants to sit in on that. And then, um, January twenty fifth work session is if needed. Most years, we've used that date to address things, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah, you've typically used it to start kind of narrowing down your thinking about what your priorities are and also to give us some sense of what you want us to take to the joint meeting, whether we should take just what we've got at that point, or you want to modify it at some point prior to that. So typically, we do use it.
And then thrown in here is January thirty first is the PTO forum. February sixth would be a big presentation televised with the selectmen and the advisory committee as a preview of the budget.
I'm sorry, did you say something on January thirty first?
January thirty first, it's not on the schedule.
What is it?
The PT, the six PTO presidents are organizing a community forum with the administration and the police chief and possibly a school committee representative on the panel to answer questions of the community. And they are, right now, they are soliciting questions from people of any topic that people want to have addressed.
Seven o'clock at the middle school, right?
It's right now?
Seven o'clock at the middle school.
I didn't hear about the police chief.
Thank you.
Yeah. So then we have our final vote and then the advisory committee will have their vote March first. And, um, the plan is to consider level services budgets and then any new requests would all be considered together, school and town.
It's like last year.
Yeah. So, um, and we will have to, uh, draft a warrant message and an annual report message, are those two separate messages?
The warrant message goes in the warrant booklet.
Yeah.
It's usually due early March.
Yeah.
And the report is late January or early February. Usually I checked again on Friday and they didn't have the date for the warrant thing at this point. No, excuse me, for the annual report at this point.
That's kind of formulaic that we've done. So, any other questions on that? Just want to make sure. Fun, fun. Okay, seven point six, to receive notification of the overnight field trip of high school students to Caber, Cabaret, Dominican Republic. I don't know if I said that right. On February fifteenth to the twenty second of two thousand nineteen. This, do you know?
We've done similar trips like this that are related to our global focus. This is an expensive one and it's not until a year from next spring, but certainly there's a lot of time needed for planning and flights for that number of people, but also an opportunity for families and students to raise the funds that are required.
And this is more of a service trip than touring around?
Right.
Okay, any forty-eight hour items?
Yes, I wanted to mention, I just received today, and perhaps you already received, the MAS C legal alert that you all get at home, that confirms that there has been a ruling about whether or not the money that Mass Department of Public Health was appropriated last year is sufficient to, uh- is sufficient to render this law or this part of a law that says we have to provide verbal screening to render it funded. And that determination finally has come. This question first came up this past fall, because prior to that, there was no money set aside to help schools with these costs. But Department of Public Health asked for $200,000 and got $200,000, and so that went off for a legal hearing and they were deemed to be correct. You'll notice the phrase in there that the number of dollars, $200,000, while, you know, not in any way supporting the costs.
Totally not a crime.
Right. So, so we have to do it and we have to do it this year, that's what the original law said. We had been told by DESS that we didn't have to do it until it was funded. And as I say, it was after July 1 of last year that the question first came up and it's taken all of these months to, to get an answer. So the good news is that our nurses are all being trained now in December, so our own nurses will be trained, all six of them. The bad news is that we now have to find approximately, we've kind of guesstimated using the rate we pay an hourly, a per diem nurse, we are, we're going to have to cover our health rooms while our middle school and high school nurses are doing the screenings. So we estimate that in each case, since we're talking about a class in excess of 300 kids in each case, that we'll be taking about four, five weeks of, of, every day doing these verbal screenings for seventh grade and for ninth grade. And we pay a higher per diem rate for subs, so the sub will have to cover our own nurse because our nurses are the ones being trained, so they have to do the screening. We do have to notify our parents that they may opt out and maybe some number will, not sure of that. Seventh grade will be a particular challenge because it's a bigger class, number one and number two, because somewhere in this busy spring, we have to find four weeks, five weeks of time not interrupted by MCAS, so that's not any small order. The MCAS is not an issue for grade nine, but certainly other things are going on. So it's a kind of a, a challenge to have to do this in half the year, not the full year, because we just got the ruling, but at least we're, we're primed for the training having been done. Interestingly, DES, the Department of Health told us several months ago that this was the end of their funding training. So my guess is that the reason they picked the $200,000 is that's what was costing them to do the training. So that helps them with their costs, it doesn't do anything to mitigate our costs, so. So we have to find that money in this year's budget and we have to put such money in next year's budget. And we didn't, well, we didn't get this until after we had our meeting this morning when we were determining what we were putting in the budget, so now we have to add...
Do you have an estimate?
This amount of money back in.
Do you have an estimate for how much that is?
Yes, it's between seven and eight or closer to $8,000.
Okay. And how long is eight, is, do we know what, what does a screening involve?
They say it's about 12 minutes per student, but of course, you can't have them lined up to come in one after the other after the other, so, you know, I think the maximum you're going to be able to do in the course of a day is, you know, 15. So we budgeted it on the basis of 15 kids a day times five days a week times six to seven weeks is how we estimated. There's nothing that says they all have to be done at the same time, so you might say, well, I'll do two weeks in, in March and two weeks in April. I think you have the flexibility to do that. But a lot of what the training is about is about the questions and about how to administer and collect the data, but also the protocols that you should be following. So we could find out at the end of the training that perhaps they're only supposed to do six a day or something like that.
I think the other thing that, it's a disproportionate use of resource to outcome. So like the, what we've been hearing of the districts that are administering it and that this, coming from the state as well, is that of all those kids that have been screened, it's picked up nobody. So the question becomes, at what point, I mean, do we leverage the resource to actually work with materials or screening tools that we know are going to be effective versus the one the DPH picked and told us to use? So it's a, not, not, I'm not putting it down, I'm just saying the reality of the districts that administered it is they're telling us that the, all the, as it's rolled out and hasn't, and that could, that could have changed right over time, but at the time, they hadn't identified anybody at risk.
Will the parents be able to see what the questions are before, if they're curious to know, what is my son or daughter going to be asked?
I don't know what the exact questions are, they'll find that out at the training, but certainly not in any secret when you're asking the same questions are to, but whether they'll release those so that parents can, that's typically what happens in service, so parents can make an eligible choice about whether they want their child included or not.
It'll be interesting because also what are they going to do with the information and then how...
And really, that's what their, their biggest interest is getting the data.
Our data, they just want the data.
Well, let's say we also find out about a child or two or three.
Well, that's a huge concern of all educators is what if you did find a child, then what options and what resources would we have to bring to that situation? That's a huge concern.
Yeah.
Can the school committee opt the district out, just out of curiosity? Or does it have to be each individual parent?
It's a law, so it's not just a Department of Public Health obligation, it's a law.
And so if the parents opt out of this, that's going to be something you will have to administrate, so file or...
No, parents have the option to opt out.
So they have to sign a form that you have to then...
I don't know that, that's, I think, part of the training.
Yeah, there must be some formal opting out process to notify the DPH.
There is, there is a sample letter actually that, that I have, I'll look at the letter and see if it says in it whether it's a form or just write a letter or something. I'm sure there's some sort of a procedure.
That's why we put Department of Public Health mandates on our five-year financial vision as a challenge.
Because if we, we had enough mandates from organizations, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, subcommittee and project reports.
Valley and negotiations are still waiting to hear back from the bus drivers to begin, so we have, nothing has changed in regards to any of those since last time.
And we still don't have the okay and the HEA front because of the new rep who's reviewing the document.
Oh.
So we still don't have a new contract document.
Nothing has changed since last time.
Okay.
I just actually got in touch with Ashley Adams today, who was our former, to ask him to review the contract because she said she did look it over, but she doesn't know all the ins and outs of the contract, so I figured I'd have to do that.
Oh, thank you. You heard all the policy stuff. We haven't scheduled our next meeting yet, but we will.
Long range planning has a meeting this Wednesday, the 20th, and the Foster School Building Committee will be meeting same evening right afterwards. I'm happy to report that I found out the difference between Creole and Cajun cooking. There is a difference.
Community outreach is meeting January 29th at 11:15 and I'm going to be following up with Stackberg, so that was discussed earlier today. Nothing else to report.
Okay, and Special Ed has a meeting coming up on Thursday and we're going to be going through the preliminary budget so that we understand it better. And then Michelle and I attended the CPAC meeting last week and it was a small crowd, but we had a good discussion and went through the work plan and that was the first time in a couple of months that we had really figured out where we were with those next steps and we'll be then reviewing that a little bit at our subcommittee meeting.
And we added two things to it last week, Jamie and I.
Yeah, I think we talked, we talked about some of those things, we were able to inform them about that, so, um, so that's it, but it was a pleasant meeting. So, unless anyone has anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.